Minutes of four.
Oh, recording at what time? It's getting close already? Oh, my God, two minutes. Yeah.
Don't, don't, don't freak out, Bruce. I'm just getting ready. I'm just getting stuff ready on my end before we go live. Okay?
Okay. Well, you let me know. You give me the countdown when we're about ten out, ten seconds, I mean. Then Casey can start letting everybody in at fifteen seconds. How many extras we got? No, one?
We have five.
Oh, really? Whoa. How do we get that thing off the screen? Where the hell is my point? Oh, you know why? I'm looking at my iPad and I'm using my mouse on the computer. No wonder I can't get rid of it. No wonder it won't move over there. You know, I had to get down the meetings being recorded. And I'm moving my mouse around. I said, why isn't it going on? I got too many things set up.
You should try coming out. You should try coming out here to the studio, Bruce. Then you're.
Oh, I could, I could do that. No problem. Hey, I was at Elvis's house. He had all the screens all on his TV. Little things that you probably little screens about this big, but the backs of the TVs were probably closet depth, you know, back in the deck. So the story goes that he saw Lyndon Johnson's office at some one time and he was watching a bunch of TV. So Elvis had that done in his basement.
All right, we're about twenty seconds out.
Oh, let him in, Casey.
Hello?
Oh. Hello?
Hello?
Sorry, technical difficulties. Standby.
Okay, technical difficulties, huh?
And you're good to go.
Notice is hereby given the Franklin zoning board of appeals will come, the meeting will come to order. This meeting is being recorded and televised. The listing of matters of those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. The meeting will be held via the Zoom platform. You can log in at the, you go to the website and look up the address on the agenda. Or you may also join the meeting on your smartphone by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. For those looking to view the meeting, it can be viewed live at this time on Comcast eight, channel eight of Verizon twenty six. Is also streaming directly from Franklin TV's website. Visit Franklin dot TV and just click on all access channel. Time being approximately seven thirty.
Time being approximately seven thirty PM, seventy one A North Park Street, Jerry Lawler. Applicant is seeking to construct a single family home. That is five feet from the right side yard, Sarah Vance with twenty as required. The building permit is denied without a variance from the ZBA.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
Jerry Lawler.
Are there any abutters for seventy one A North Park Street? Okay, I don't hear any, but that doesn't mean they're not there.
Um, there's a, my lawyer was supposed to be representing me and.
Jerry.
Oh, somebody's there. Somebody showed up.
I've been here the whole time. David Vulcan, I'm counsel for Jerry Lawler. He just can't see that I've been here, so.
Okay, go ahead and tell us what you want to do. It's incumbent upon the applicant to explain their position.
Yes, thank you, sir. So I'm not sure how familiar the the ZBA is with the property seventy one A North Park Street. In Franklin, so I just want to go back a little bit just to give a bit of history as it's relevant to the context of the application. So this property was originally a conjoined structure. So it was originally like a larger family home with two parts of the family living in one half. Another part living in the other half. That part that Mr. Gerald Lawler now owns. Was deeded to him. In two thousand and five and then. In two thousand and sixteen, the family members who owned the other half. Sold their property to the adjoining butter, Mr. Glenn Cross. Now, this is not, this home is over a hundred and fifteen years old. It was built before zoning. This was not registered as a condominium or as a duplex. The property line actually went. Right down the middle of the residence. There was a fire that happened in two thousand and twenty one. I'm sorry. I, I, was there a question, sir?
No, I didn't ask a question. I might have been Mr. Lawler. I don't know. I can't did. You've got no screen. You've got no cameras, so I don't know. But if it happens again, we'll mute them until we need them.
It was in July of two thousand and twenty one, there was a fire. That happened that started on the Glen Cross side of the property, but because it's conjoined property, it burned down. Both sides of the property. Or both were basically condemned by the town. Those structures have now been raised so that neither structure or half of the structure exists at this time. Collaterally and somewhat relevant to the hearing as well is there was litigation that was going on between. Mr. Lawler and Mr. Glenn Cross. Over adverse possession of a five foot, I'm sorry, a two foot. By approximately fifteen foot. Part of the land, which was the deck and mudroom. Of the Lawler side of the residence that was actually over the border. That case has been decided in court already. But there's some still paperwork that. There's been some delays on. Mr. Glenn Cross's side of just finalizing the language. Once that goes to the court, so we can't rip that actual bump out that you see in the plan, that actually is not yet recorded. But that is going to be pending from the court. As the issues that for granting the adverse possession was already done. It was just a matter of having the. Agreement for judgment with the proposed revised plot plan. So that could be properly recorded. Once we submit it, the judge will sign off on that and. That will be finalized. It's. Part of also, one of the things I would like to request is that we, we don't conclude today on this issue. We continue because. Mr. Glenn Cross was supposed to have his. Application and there was some miscommunications. His package, I believe, is now in or going to be in soon. And it, because a lot of the issues do. Where he's planning on. Requesting a variance to situate his new residence. Has bearing on some of the concerns that the the board members may have here. In fact, his lawyer was supposed to be here tonight. I asked him to appear. But I don't see him. John Powers is his name. He's the attorney for Mr. Lawler, for Mr. Glenn Cross. But the other thing, so that the idea was that, you know, the properties that were not going to be rebuilt as the same. Structure, because there was a lot of issues between the two butters. And it was in the best interest of the parties to create two separate, single family homes. The area is not zoned for a, even though it could have been grandfathered in, but it's not zoned for a two family residence. In that area, multi-family. So the idea was to try to maintain the. Cost by keeping the same sort of footprint. Originally. Because the town normally has a provision in the bylaws, an exception for variances or requirement for variances where there's an issue of a casualty. But this is an extremely unusual circumstance where. Literally because there's no agreement between the parties on rebuilding. There can be no ability to rebuild under that exception. We had a meeting. With Mr. Brown and with the town council. Over that issue where we were not going to be permitted to to file for that exception. So therefore, we're coming in with the variance. The reason for the variance, now the variance is actually that's being requested is. It would be as close as five feet for a small portion of the of the new resident residents. And. Twelve feet for a bulk of it and ten feet for a small section, a fifteen foot section as well. So it varies between. So there's a small fifteen foot section of five feet. Another fifteen foot section of ten and then the rest is a twelve. The idea was to. The existing driveway on the. Western side of the property. Is a two car with driveway. The idea was to take the property, move it over, split the driveway. So that there'd be a driveway on one side on the border. And a driveway on the other side of the border. Some hardship issues for not moving the property over further. Is that there's, there's a big slope. And also some old growth trees. So this property is, as it is a very old property. With a lot of old growth vegetation and there's the slope that comes down on that rear part of that property. And you have. Basically, you have the North Park Street, which Houston Street, and there's another street on the adjacent side behind it. Where you have water runoff from stormwater runoff that pools in through that rear side of that property, which. Normally, at the current usage, the way it was, that didn't pose a substantial problem, but. If you start building over towards where that water drains in. It would require a tremendous amount of fill. Which would cost a substantial amount of money. It's already costing a lot of additional funds that aren't covered by insurance already. To Mr. Lawler because the insurer, you know, didn't care about the zoning issues and the fact that, you know, you can't build. We literally could not build. On the other building. You just couldn't do it because it was going to have to be moved because you, because the other building went right to the property line. It was actually, it was right at the property line because that's how the property deeds were made, splitting the property. So the idea was to minimize the costs. Number one, with the draining issues in the, in the engineering that would have to go into that. The landscaping issues of dealing with the old growth trees that would need to be trimmed, cut or removed. The existing landscaping that would require even more. You know, any cost savings of utilizing any existing landscaping would be completely scuttled and that would have to be all completely removed. The other issue is. With regards to the pool. There's an existing in-ground pool in the rear of the prop back rear of the property and by moving it over, it would. Essentially put the house almost into the pool, which would require the pool to then have to also be. Removed at that twenty foot mark. So, you know, again, the idea was we trying to put together a proposal to the town for variance for the sake of. Financial hardship in that moving this property, any, any distance you move the property over from its existing site costs. More money. It's not just incremental of saying, well, if it's at five feet here, it costs. The same as it is if you're moving at ten feet. There's because of the sloping, because of the landscaping. It does create a more substantial hardship further over. That you have to go. Now, as I know, I believe the board knows that we did request a continuous because again, we want to have. Some of these issues heard along with Mr. Glenn Cross. So that we can show that their proposed structure. Is going to be further back on their property so that wouldn't be, you wouldn't have the issues of two properties. Being close together in terms of lateral distance. Where you would have issues of fire suppression or issues like that. So the idea was that. Glenn Cross is going to be seeking a variance to go to the rear of the property. So there would be no overlap. In terms of where these two residents, and that would solve that issue of that appearance. It would. You know, by maintaining it as close to its approximate. Previous location, it also. In order to keeping the. Nature and quality of the neighborhood as similar as it was to before the fire. And as I said, we would, we would like to. To be granted that continuance to that. January fifth hearing, I believe, which would. Give the proper notification requirements for Mr. Glenn Cross. So that his could be heard and also if there's any issues the board has that. More information could be provided or. Issues addressed, we would have some time to do that.
I'm just waiting on you to say through your presentation.
That, that, sorry. Yes, that, that is what I have for now.
Okay, I got a couple of questions just so we get everything open, open here. You mentioned about elevations. You didn't say anything about soil conditions, but I think I read it in your report there or something. And we got soil conditions, elevations and the shape of a lot. My opinion of the shape of a lot is pretty square. That's okay. You didn't put down any elevations. I know there's a little drop there when you come in off of what Houston Street and on Park Street at the corner. You talked about old growth trees. I'm not mistaken, but I think we have the tree, the former tree warden on on ZBA, which would be a great help, but. I think that those old growth trees that you're talking about are along the street line and not in the middle of the lot. Because if I'm not mistaken, the middle of the lot is pretty open. That, that's just for a couple. The next question I want to know is who created that line? That supposed line there? Who created that?
I'm sorry, but which line are you referring to?
The, the line that divides where you say it divides the two houses, where the house, where the house was and the line goes right down the middle. Who created that line? I mean, the only one who could create that line would have been the planning board.
That is an interesting question. I, it happened so long ago that none of the people who did it are alive.
I, doesn't make any difference if they're alive. There's got to be a paper trail somewhere. You just can't say, listen, I wish I could do that at my house. I, I put a line in here, I put a line in over there and I'll say, I got. You know, two or three more house lots there. That doesn't make any sense to me. I can tell you that I did a little research on this and I did find that there's a plan. That shows planning board disapproval on July ninth of nineteen sixty nine. Then I see there's a ZBA approval that was granted in ten two of nineteen seventy five. Unfortunately, I, I inquired at the town clerk's office and I inquired at the building department. And nobody can find anything in regards to either of those decisions. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just really curious is how you stuck line down the middle of the house. And I now Mr. Lawler, I guess, was arguing over five feet of a hallway or something. Or fifteen feet by five feet, whatever that turns out to be. I'm not sure exactly what it is. You know, who, you know, my other understanding was just, it could have been considered a, either a two family or a condo or two condos. No condo docks. If at least if there was condo docks, there wouldn't be a line there because the land would go with the condos. But they could have exclusive use of that property, you know, put in a dotted line, but. Somebody can't just come in here, put a dotted line and say, hey, this is where it was, right down the middle of the two houses. Because this whole lot was one time that lot behind it was there too, you know, and but now. You showing that line with a fence on it going all the way down in the back. So I'm just curious as to where that line came from, whether anybody's around or not. There's got to be a paper trail, but. Look, and I'm not a, I'm not a title attorney and I don't know where your specialty is. I don't know whether you practice land law or. Criminal defense or whatever, but. You know, it's, somebody's got to find out where that line came from. Who put it there? And I think. And the other thing is you, you're looking at a house that's five foot off the line. I, I can tell you just by looking at it close here. You got plenty of room to either move the house over or swing the house around. And locate it in a different position. It's going to move it five feet off the line. I'm not so sure that you're going to get approval. I'm not so sure you're going to be successful in convincing everybody that that thing's going to be five feet off the line. It's going to be okay. Might be okay in your mind or Mr. Lawler's mind. But, you know, and it's not, number one, it's not okay in my mind because you, you know, for what you want to do here, you're looking to do something. And we haven't got the application on the next lot over here where that house is going to go. But you're saying he's going towards the back. Why does he got to go all the way to the back? You know, I haven't seen that. You talked about that. You shouldn't be talking about it because you don't represent.
You know, I'm only referring to what I, I. What has been submitted, what was agreed upon between both parties.
Anyway, that's what I had to say. Is there any others? Before I go to the board, there wasn't any. I'll just call it out again. Are there any others that would like to make a comment or ask a question? Okay, I'll go to the board then. Chris, any questions? Or comments?
No questions or comments, Mr. Chairman. You hit on a lot of the thoughts that I had regarding to the positioning of the proposed structure and the lot itself, regardless of the lot lines. Thank you.
Okay, Megan, any questions?
No question. Yeah, you definitely hit on everything with that. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Philip, sure, you must have a question.
Well, there's quite a few questions to be involved here, but. We got to see both people here because I don't understand five feet. I, I just don't understand five feet. When there's sixty four feet on the other side. So I'm sure there's some way that that house can be moved. Plus, if the people don't get along as it is now. Being five feet off a property like, in my own mind, that's just going to bring on more. Conflict.
Okay, I'm not even worried about the lot line because I'm not even sure the lot line exists. Somebody's going to have to prove it. Somebody's going to have to prove me that lot line's there. I mean, Mr. Volker, I got a question for you.
Yes.
My understanding that if a property or a structure burns down, even if it's on a non-conforming lot or non-performing structure. If it's destroyed by natural causes like a hurricane or a tornado or something. Or if it's destroyed by fire. You can replace it within two years. Did anybody, did anybody give any thought to that?
Uh, yes, but that would have required the. What we wanted to do is essentially buy out the other property so that it could be rebuilt as what, as it was. And those negotiations took time and ultimately were fruitless. We were not able to. Purchase the property.
Okay, you, you investigated that part of it, but we built in the house, even with, even, even if they had to live back together again.
It would have required. Upgrades in terms of current codes, in terms of fire, you know, firewalls and things of that nature. But that was investigated and neither party. Wanted that.
I, I think we're fortunate enough to have the building commissioner here tonight. Gus, you still on, on the call?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Gus Brown, Building Commission.
Gus, with what I said, was that correct? About replacing the building within two years?
Of course it is. You're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple of things that I wanted to just go over. I was taking a couple of notes here. Mr. Vulcan, who I met with and John Powers, the attorney for Glenn Cross, we met. Sometime over the course of the beginning of the summer. But Mr. Vulcan brings up a point where it was in the best interest of the parties to split the house and separate them from one another as well as. He mentioned not allowing the exception for the property to be rebuilt. I don't think that was ever really put on the table, to be honest with you, because of what Mr. Vulcan just said. And then because it's a, because he stated that it's not a condominium. I believe that they would have to meet the setbacks for a single family home on those lots, if that lot line exists.
Yeah.
That's why he's in front of variants. Now, if they wanted to rebuild, which I don't think was ever on the table. And it was not explored that far. If I get an application for a building, then I would have to issue it.
Thank you. Mr. Volker, it's obviously my intention to give you a continuation till the, till the abutter gets his paperwork and or at least we get it advertised and. We can have a proper hearing on that, but. You know, talking about setbacks. I can tell you that this five foot off the line, I don't think is going to fly. So you can make your decisions on however you want to turn the house somewhere, you know, on your own. I'm not sure that the butters. If he gets in here, like, I can't see unless he's going to put a toothpick of a house in there, how he's going to make any, any setbacks or. Or whatever, you know, and then having to have him move his house all the way to the back. Maybe that's where he wants it. I don't know, but. I haven't seen it yet. It hasn't been applied for. So I've actually seen a plan of it, but I haven't, you know, nothing else. And like I said, I think that the house that's shown on this plan here, that seventy one A. Is substantial in size and I don't think that there'd be any problem. I don't even think with the size of this house that you'd have a problem. Maybe trying to make the setbacks. Because the setbacks are pretty generous in this particular zone. But they're not as generous. They're not generous enough to make you go to five feet. Casey, somebody's got a hand up, but I don't know who it is.
Chairman, it's Gus Brown, the Lincoln.
Oh, that was you. Okay, I'm sorry.
I know Mr. Lawler is on the call. I'd be willing to meet him out there. To look at the land a little bit and see what he wants to do as far as. Possibly moving it. I know he had a two family house shown at one point. I don't know if that's changed. But he can call my office or email me and I'll be happy to go out there and walk the lot with him. And possibly a surveyor too. I know there's still the issue of the lot line, but. It's on the table for me to go on.
Mr. Volker.
Vulcan, sir.
Vulcan, I'm sorry. If that lot line doesn't exist. What's the future of? Two houses?
Um, you know that. This was already a pretty bad mess to begin with, the way the property was. I mean, this is the, it's recorded in the, in the registry of deeds, the, these lines. It's, that would almost nullify. Mr. Glenn Cross's property. Because he would have bought something that doesn't exist.
Well, unless he bought a half of a duplex.
Um, you know, but. I believe he has a claim against his title, ensure. I can't speak to that. I, I won't.
I don't expect it to either. I don't expect it to.
But, you know, to that extent, I, I. It, it would create a legal nightmare if that's the case. But. You know, I wasn't aware of that nineteen sixty nine. And you said the other one was nineteen seventy five?
Correct.
I wasn't aware of those decisions. I'll have to go back and see if I can't go through the town records and. If there's anything more on that that I can. Review, I'll look it up. And then try to match what I can up with the title records, which I do have.
Okay, but you got to understand where we're coming from. He might have bought something that didn't exist to begin with, but you know, I mean, you just can't put a line. You know, line in the sand, so to say, so to speak.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. It's, it's, it's not easy. It's not an easy answer. Whether we'd have to apply for a subdivision. If one was denied, I don't know. I don't know. It's. It shouldn't have happened. But it did. You know, we can just deal with it as we, as we can, but. I don't know. When we were up in front of the land court, the land court didn't bring up the issue.
There was, the other thing was brought up by the building commission, I guess, and I don't know if you were in those meetings or not. They, they were talking about Mr. Lawler wanted to build a two family. Is this house depicted here? Is this a two family? Is this house depicted here? Is this a two-family?
Mr. Chairman, that was a two-story, I had said, two-story house.
Oh, two-story, okay. All right.
No, but I, you know, I mean. Just single, single family.
Okay, all right. I thought you said two families.
He did, but I think he just misspoke.
Okay. Is this particular house two-story?
I think the initial intent was two-story, but that may get changed due to financial hardships as well.
Okay. All right. Well, with the idea that this is going to be continued, Casey, what's the date? Is it July fifth, July? Yeah, it's got to be July fifth.
January fifth.
January fifth, yeah, July. I'm already in July. Okay, January fifth. What do we got for time? Because I think there's one in front of them.
There's one in front, so seven thirty-five.
Okay, seven thirty-five. Okay, anything else that the applicant want to add before we have an entertaining motion to continue?
No, sir. I believe if if we'll meet with Gus Brown, and if we need to submit some additional designs or explanations or evidence showing the hardship, we will, we'll have it before the board prior to that meeting.
It was, I'm familiar with the property. I don't, you know, without, you know, there's no elevations on the plan to show this supposed slope that you talk about. I know that from the roadway down, there's a little bit of a drop there. Nothing insurmountable. I think the house across directly on the opposite corner has a bigger, a bigger drop in there, but
I know his yard does go below the street level.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're going to put a foundation, you're not putting it on slab. So that's going to take up whatever drop is there, the foundation. If you get my drift. But anyway, neither hand in there. I'm not an architect either, so. But, all right, with all that being said, I'll entertain a motion to continue this until January fifth at seven, what did we say, Casey? Friday, seven thirty-five?
Seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five P M.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Megan?
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see here. I'm being approximately seven thirty-five. Two thirty-seven Pleasant Street, Saint John Episcopal Church of Franklin in the Community Builders, Inc. Applicant is seeking to a building permit to construct a sixty-four unit multifamily development. The building permit is denied without a comprehensive permit from the ZBA.
We're in receipt of a letter dated November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, R E two thirty-seven Pleasant Street, Franklin, Mass., applicant Saint John Episcopal Church and the Community Builders, Inc. Please, DM is there. Please be advised that this firm is legal counsel to the applicant, Community Builders, Inc. In the proposed development and the above entitled property in the town of Franklin, on behalf of my client, I would finally request that the above entitled matter previously scheduled for seven thirty-five on December first, two thousand twenty-two be continued to the board's agenda in the evening of December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. At your convenience, kindly acknowledge your receipt, whatever. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and it's Richard Akoneta, attorney, Richard Akoneta Junior, attorney from Franklin. Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to continue this until December fifteenth at what time, Casey?
Seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five P M.
Is there anything else at night?
Yeah, we have one across a garage, I think, application for a garage. Believe me, we wouldn't have been, we wouldn't have been talking about this if, if we didn't have anything else, we would have put them off until January.
Okay, cool.
Okay, I heard a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote. Chair votes yes.
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, on the general business, we got a email letter from P L A P C for variance extension for KGS Realty, Inc. for a wireless communication facility at Bent Street in Franklin. This is a communication tower that we approved, I guess, about a year ago in December. Is any, any of the applicant or any, anybody representing the applicant here tonight?
Yes, sir. This is Stephen Keller here with KGS Realty.
Okay, just tell them what your holdup is and why you need the extension.
Yeah, sir, it's, the biggest holdup we had was, we were you know, the, we, if you recall, recall the, you know, we have an agreement in place or almost in place with the town for them to have rights to the top forty feet or so of the tower. But, you know, for us to kind of move forward, we needed to have a paying customer. So we had been working with Verizon over the last year to finalize that agreement, which we have. So Verizon's going to be the tenant on that tower at a hundred and forty-five feet. And we're also in the middle of that. We have some federal obligations that we have to finish up, try to put the shovel in the ground, the NIPA, which encompasses, you know, travel notifications, data historic, and all, and all that other stuff. So so we're working towards it. I think we we would anticipate being shovel, you know, shovel in the ground sometime late spring and then having it be done, you know, July, August timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Just so the board knows, the applicant's within his rights to request an extension. We grant him a six, six-month extension on a variance. And so that's what he's looking for. We don't know the exact date that that was approved, do we? Six months from the, six months extra from the time of approval, whenever, I guess it was in December sometime.
There was a second hearing in December, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, of last year, so.
Okay, yeah. Anyway, Casey will look that up, and then we'll put it in the six months from that date when it was approved. That's fine with you. I know you probably want a year, but you're only going to get six months.
No, I want to get it going. I know, I don't want to have to keep dealing with Mr. Brown.
On the other hand, if you were a convict, you'd take the six months over the year, so. But anyway. All right, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to grant the variance extension for KGS Realty for the wireless communication facility at Bent Street for six months from the previous approval. A year or eighteen months from the previous approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote. Philip?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. Approval of the November third, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes. Members have been provided with a copy electronically. If you've had a chance to read it, I'll entertain a motion. If not, we can take a minute or two to, to read them.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Megan?
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Casey, anything else to come before the board?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next meeting, January fifth.
December fifteenth.
December.
December fifteenth, I'm thinking of January, yeah. But anyway, there is one in January fifth, but, okay. I was just making sure you're on your toes, that's all. Requires a second. Yeah, I heard.
Oh, seconds.
Thanks, Megan. Yeah. All right, motion to adjourn, non-debatable. Roll call vote. Megan?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Philip?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. See you in a couple of weeks.
You're welcome.